So we make a start, it's Finance and Personnel Committee, Tuesday the 19th of December. Thank you for attending, particularly so close to Christmas. Start with five two one, does anybody have any declarations of any disposable community interests? None, thank you very much, any apologies for absence, Alan?
Just one, rung wood.
Okay, thank you. It's Mr Brindle, I'm just trying to work out who we've got missing. And yeah, apologies for Alan as well.
Yeah, she did send.
Yeah. That will make eight. Minutes five two three, to confirm the minutes of Finance and Personnel Committee held on the 21st of November. Are you happy that they were true and accurate record?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Item five two four, to receive and approve the listings of payments made since the last committee meeting. Anything you want to add, Alan, to the report?
The payments included.
By six thirty then. Does anybody have any questions on the approval of payments? No. In which case can I have a proposal and a second to adopt them? David, thank you David, and somebody with a second, Doug, all in agreement? Just rumble, it's been planning committee all day, so it's probably grouchy this evening. So that's the payments approved, thank you very much for that. Five two five, personnel report to receive and discuss the personnel report for the month. That was included in your pack, anything to add, Alan, to the report?
Yeah, it should be written down, so.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions on the personnel report? No, it's a fairly standard item each month now, which is good to keep track of training course has been completed and there's new ones being added. So it was a good sign, people continue to go on training. So our task is to note, duly noted, moving on to five two six, logging and reporting of complaints. This is a new standard gender item in accordance with our complaints policy. It requires finance and personnel to note any complaints that have been received, and I don't believe there are any, which is always a good sign. So we're noting there are none. Five two seven, the financial report for the eight months ended the 30th of November. Again, that has been circulated and we're getting, what are we now, two thirds of the way through the financial year almost. Anything you want to add to the report, Alan?
I think the only concern is what's happening in venues and markets and it's really just the recession or the slowdown in economic activity really reflects it. The higher bookings are down, the higher sales are down, and I think it's just the complexity of the current economy. So that's a little bit worrying in terms of, with the rest of it on par. We've received a lot more money from the payment agency from an amenities perspective than we expected, so that's a bit of a bonus. And we've just got some capital grants to come in, which hopefully they'll be at the end of the year and that will clear stock out a little bit.
Well, when the scaffolding comes down, are you expecting an improvement in bookings and everything for the, not the Carnegie and everything, but certainly for the Guild Hall, maybe difference, even a slight difference?
I think it will, because obviously the utilization at the moment, people have historically booked for the Guild Hall. We now have to move them into the Carnegie, which then blocks out bookings for the Carnegie. So I think it has had an impact and it will continue to shorten that impact.
Okay, yeah. Have we done any sort of analysis of how many bookings potentially or how much money we've lost specifically because of the scaffolding?
What happens from the accounting perspective, we don't actually distinguish Guild Hall or the Carnegie because it's not important to us from an accounting perspective. They have door measures, so they can measure how many people come through the front doors of the Guild Hall. And because of the key room closing, that might distort that, but I would think that there's, you know, there is a reduction. The other problem that we have is that the Guild Hall heating is not working. So if you really want to wake up call and you can go there and sit there for a little while, then you will certainly be wide awake. Because we have a challenge there, so that we have to also address. What I'm speaking of is actually really part of the Guild Hall because the pex and some of the rooms are getting so moist and cold that we started to get a little bit of mould.
Why isn't the heat though budget broken down?
The oil burner got, essentially got condemned, so we couldn't turn it on. We had people come in and they were quoting ridiculous amounts of money to have the heating system improved. And quite recently, someone, I don't know why we didn't think about earlier, but someone's come up with the solution, why don't we just get a new gas boiler? And we're actually having quotes come in, we've had one came in today and we're expecting one or two more quotes in this week or certainly very early in the new year. And we might have to come to council and actually ask for suspension of standing orders if we've got three quotes. Because the damage it could be causing could be far greater. And as provided, the quoting process has been very independent, we put all the word trails to show that. So I think that might be a solution, but we've got to do something.
And soon.
And soon.
And that's in hand by other people, I take it?
It came before venues and markets. And given the prohibitive cost of the planned replacement of equipment, we deferred it for a time bit. And this is the outcome of that deferment, which I'm very pleased to hear about.
Unless I've missed something, it's the first time I've heard of it. Should that not have come to finance at an earlier stage? Or would the normal thing be you go out and get the price and then bring it to here?
I think that the solution was only identified to get a gas boiler, it was only recently identified. Obviously, I mean, if it comes out at £60,000, well then you can go back to what the original proposals were. But the first price that came in today was certainly a lot significantly, more than 50% lower than the previous solution had been. There might have to be a little bit of adaptations to put suits and whatever else that has to be put in. But once we have the three tenders and we're then in a position, we can either come to planning or we can go to full council and say, this is the situation. If we got on a full tender process, we could be looking at certainly a very long period of time.
I think it would be nice if more people knew that you were looking into it, would be great. If I missed it, then that's fine.
You know, obviously it would have been in the minutes, et cetera.
That's fine, if it was great, that's it.
I'm not being chipping on.
No, I understand that, don't worry, I missed it, that's all it was to it. Thank you, that's lovely.
Okay, the other thing worth noting about the report thus far is the good news about the new contract for the rubbish disposal. And that started on the 1st of December, I believe.
Yeah.
So really pleased to see that, and I think it was Breckland in the end that coordinated a press release about that. But that has gone live and I assume no issues?
I've not heard anything. I was on the market on Saturday and the bins were Breckland bins, not the old ones. So that's good, brand new bins.
Good, because that cost over, I was quite a concern, so I'm glad that's all been nipped in the bud. Any other questions on the budget as well? Thank you, Alan.
Stop spitting now.
Sorry?
Stop spitting now.
It's been really well.
Yeah. Five two eight, review of the third draft of budget for next financial year, having heard the discussion about the current financial year budget. This is the final time that we look at this, and this is after tonight, our recommendation to full council in January. The budget that we expect them to adopt and therefore the council tax increase, which is obviously linked to it. There's an awful lot of information in the budget, but it has been to every committee at least twice. And this is the third time that we've looked at it as a finance committee. Alan's done a really helpful narrative on the front of the report. Does anyone have any questions on any of the information included within?
I think my, about the gas bill, which was like much higher budget than the boiler.
So we had quite a significant heating oil budget and I didn't want to get rid of that because of the owners, some of that would be used in gas.
That makes sense, I just wanted to make sure I tracked the white paper.
So I think the only thing for me is, we mentioned before, or I mentioned before about the reserves. And I know we've got a line in there saying that reserves are only going to be used for non-recurring events. But I'd like to see somehow how what we're doing in the future year is going to impact on our reserves, just so that it's in our thoughts. Because it's very easy to put a line in there and then go, we've got reserves. And we know they're depleting, we know they're going to continue to deplete, but how that looks for us is important, I think. I don't think it should be item number one, but I think we should be aware of it.
Reserves are such a huge level in my head. Do we need, is there a reason we keep them so hard lately?
For rainy down. Well, so if for instance, somebody says, oh, we can fix Bell Tower tomorrow, but we'd need match funding for it, that's where that would come from. You know, so a lot of our projects, if we wanted to react quickly and have the ability to do that, we wouldn't have reserves.
How much are reserves?
A million pounds.
How much?
Nearly a million pounds.
Million pounds.
So that's a, that's getting close to 100% of that budget, isn't it?
You know, if reserves were half that, then even if we didn't need to fix the two towers, that's only going to cost like a hundred thousand quid anyway. So we've got, just my view, and I'd like to, not now discuss it, I would like at some time in the new year to question why we need, as Terry's rightly pointed out, 100% of our annual income is held in reserve. I just can't see the need for that.
We have reserves and they're held in accordance with our reserves policy, which we as a council approved as recently as October this year. So I think it'd be important that members to read that policy and understand what reserves we have before we start to debating. Because we have earmarked reserves and un-earmarked reserves and we have to have a certain amount in the general fund, for example, and for other purposes. So I'm more than happy to have a discussion about it, but I think members need to be aware of that the information is there, as we have said.
Fine.
And just to answer Max's point, in the next financial year, the budget will be contributing to those reserves to top them up. I'm just short of £76,000, so we are increasing the level of reserves and making up for that next year.
See, that's perfect, that really answers a question for me, because we know that we depleted it over the last three years. And we've said before that we're going to put some in, but knowing how much is going in and what that looks like, I think it's important to say, Alan, that's what's happening. Rather than the one line where it is.
So the key reserves which we are increasing next year is the property repairs, because we own a lot of property as a town council and it only ever gets older. And therefore, building up a reserve is important. Election costs, and we had that debate, I think, last month, where we said we put five grand a year, because every four years it's about 20k to cover the cost of an election. And we're putting some money into play park renewal, because again, we own a lot of play areas and they're getting tired and need significant renewal. There's a renewal reserve. And I've also asked Alan to include a new cemetery reserve, there are any mind points, I think, that you've made in the past, Mac, about how we're barely covering the income and expenditures washing its face at the moment. We need to be putting money aside to build up a cemetery reserve, so there is a new cemetery reserve.
That's answered.
So at the moment, the budget that we've got, there's a surplus of £10,385. We could recommend to do something else with that money, or we could reduce the increase to the preset. It's been based on a 10% increase. If we didn't want to spend that £10,300, it would only be an 8.99% increase, which is equivalent to £13.91 for a band D, which actually is not too bad for the amount of improvement in terms of activities within the budget. You know, we're allowing for quite a few new things, brand new things, all for the cost of just short of £14. I'm happy to take some guidance from the committee, but I would be keen for us to be very clear on what we wanted to do with that £10,000 if we weren't going to reduce it. Does anyone have any sort of strong views, either way?
So I'm going to hit you with one that I think we've already talked about, is dentum. The more money we can push that away, I think the better, for the people of Thetford. It's something I, every time, not every time, but so often, I'm talking to people, they talk about the availability or lack of availability of dentists.
And it's in the news again, actually, today, big time, isn't it? It's in the news.
Yeah, yeah.
Today.
Doug? Yeah, I don't, I feel like it's important, but I was wanting to wrap it in quarters and like we've done once, that like, you know, it's possible income costs is still palating, there is still knowledge. The increase we do, I personally think that's a good thing, and it's only small beans, but yeah, ultimately we have responsibility, in my opinion, to not add to the burn as much as possible. So I'm happy for our family.
Hold on, David.
Sorry.
Chris follows and puts his hand up.
I would agree with reducing, but I mean, if we had a hell of a one of the last giving to 20.
We did.
Now, as you quite rightly pointed out, these are also, I'd be quite happy to make the ownnesses.
Okay, thank you, David.
The majority of people in the band D properties are going to miss by a month. And when I say the majority of like 90% of us, I don't know what my property is, I have no idea, but the people in properties A, B and C. Perhaps if anyone's on benefits, they are on the A, Bs and Cs, and they pay only 75. You know, most people on benefits only pay 75% or 85% of that.
92.5.
90, they get 92.5% relief. So you know, we are talking there as they pay three pounds or four pounds a year. It's not really going to hurt anybody for the benefits we give them. People can miss three or four pounds a year increase, is my view. You know, I'm not going to miss that, but you know, yes, some people at the bottom need the help, but I don't think they're going to miss two, three.
Thank you, David, Mac?
I kind of disagree with Chris a little bit, we did have a hit last year, but it was because we'd not had any raises of reasonable size for several years. So you know, that was a result of not doing anything and a bit of the, we don't want to affect the people of Thetford, which we've done for a few years. And then last year we had go up. So I kind of agree with both David and yourself in that it's not that great and there are other things that can be spent on. You know, I think you continue to keep your precept going up in line with what's going on and people can afford it. The problem comes when we don't do anything and suddenly we have to go for a big spike and it really affects everybody. So that's my thought, dentist dream, my god.
You actually hit me there, didn't you?
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mac, as you say, I agree that we're going up, we are going up, like, we're just missing how far we go up, in my opinion. So I, for me, it's about trying to, if it will go up and there will be costs, and just trying to make sure that traffic is as smooth as possible. Because, yes, and I agree, you might not know to say that if everything is going up, which it does, if a bill goes up, that bill goes up. It all adds up and it all creates that just effect. So if we can smooth that out as much as possible and do sensible things, we don't have to do a big jump, which I agree with, but just something easy to little, that would be fine.
If we could do, sorry. If we could do something like the dent aid and say, well, you know, this is a, I'm going to pick on dent aid. If we can say, look, you know, this is good, because this is going to benefit so many people, enough people to make a difference. People that can't act as a dentist may not pay much in council tax, but all of a sudden, someone can act as a dentist. Now, if you put that money to good use, it's going to benefit the community, the community is going to benefit from more than three or four pounds a year. Anyway, sorry, that's me.
I kind of agree, and the only thing I would say for yourself, Doug, is yes, it gets harder for everybody as money goes up. But everything, our costs are also going up. So if we don't follow in line, we won't be able to afford the next project or the next project. So I get, I get your point.
Yeah, I do understand your point very much, sir.
And do you have a view, Alan?
I thought you might have said, but your chance to comment.
Why?
I was in the other seats.
Mary Jane.
We've had three months of discussions. And if you had something specific that came out of that process, which we needed 10 grand for, then we could go up by 10%. We've reached the end of this process and there is a surplus of 10 grand. I'm always reluctant to put council tax up by any more than we absolutely need to. And therefore I think we can get away with 8.99.
Fair enough. I'm going to disagree, okay, however, I'm happy to keep quiet and go with the majority.
We've got two options on the table and people.
And I'm going to keep quiet and let the other people vote.
Okay, so as I see it, we've got a proposal for 10% increase or an 8.99% increase. Could I have a show of hands in favour of a 10% increase, please?
I feel like an asshole.
Listen, I completely agree with you, I completely agree with you, but I'm going to keep, I did say.
Is that recorded?
I'm going to keep my hand down and let the other people go through.
Could I have a show of hands in favour of 8.99? And that would be my preference.
I actually agree with you, but I did say I'd keep my hand down.
Yeah, well, you'd have been able to vote anyway.
I definitely ask your opinion.
Before we're in democracy, I would, yeah, I would, it's splitting hairs, really. But as I say, I just think, you know, without a very clear reason at this stage, I can't think what we're not doing next year. We are budgeting an awful lot of new stuff and there is a capacity issue about how much we can deliver in one year, so it needs to be mindful of that.
It's under 8.99%, which is like the solid petrol prices. Could it put it up by 8.7%? 8.99% is 9%, that is different.
As it happens, 10,385 works out at 8.99 to get a balanced budget, which is what we're achieving. I hear what you're saying, but the actual percentage comes from a calculation, not just a number picked out over the air.
9% maybe extra, but you know, what fraction that would be, and if we quickly find something, so now.
I think whether it's 5%, 9%, 8.99, it's always bad news. So whatever people say, they put it up, and this is why we kept it down for so long.
Okay, so we've settled the percentage issue and that has left us with a balanced budget for the year ahead, which we need to recommend to council. I am happy to propose to full council the budget as outlined in the papers, which includes an 8.99% increase. Would somebody like to second that?
Yeah.
David, all those in favour? That we have a budget recommendation going to council sometime the second week of January.
If you would like, we could, especially before planning. Because all the councils will be, we just need to do any of that, which we can do.
Overwhelmed for you. Is there anything else you can say in relation to the budget, Alan?
I think it's been, it's been nice to have a little bit of direction as well. It's only driven by offices, it's been quite nice, it's a brainwork, it's been very helpful to me in particular to have this. I really would like to thank the councils for doing that, it's been, it's been nice to know what some of the key things, requirements are.
Okay, thank you, we'll move on then, folks, to five two nine, update on the action plans to vacate King's House. And again, there was a report circulated, would you like to take us through that one, Alan, some quite useful information in there?
I think there's, we've got the issue of sorting out the archive and that has no impact on moving out of King's House. And if we didn't move out, we have to get rid of a lot of the stuff upstairs. We've been scraping that out, we've really got some quotes in terms of moving the stuff out. And we've got, I think we've got a process, and I've said it out in the papers, the process just to get a proper archive system going. We just need to get a little bit, make sure that this competitive, so we'll do a little bit more work around that. And hopefully, within the next few weeks, we'll be able to actually get, move clear of the whole upstairs. We've got some work to do on the Mechanical Institute, which used to operate out the Guild Hall in the 1870s, which was like, you know, it's school, there's a whole lot of books in one of the rooms up there. Apparently, we, the custodians of it, so we've got to get that archive, but then what we'll do is we'll get someone from Norfolk Records to come in and actually say, is this of historical significance? Or is it just stuff we're keeping for the sake of keeping it? And there might be some other stuff that we have that would do that. So we've set out a process to do that. In terms of actually moving out of this building, it really is about doing a feasibility study. And there's a couple of things that we actually need to help us do that. The first one is, what can we do with all the regalia? So I've suggested that we just have a discussion around that, because that has an impact. Secondly, what do we, you know, what do we want to put in display? For example, things in this room, do we want to put that in display elsewhere? The second thing is, we've got to keep some of our regalia secure, so we have no storage space at the Carnegie Guild Hall that's secure. So we have to just, you know, what are the propositions be to actually continue renting the strong room from the charity? And then once we have the feasibility study, we can then come to finance committee, go to council and a decision is taken, not just a principle, yes, we're going to do it, these are the costs and this is the implication of it. We have also come up with some challenges, one of the previous tasks that I had, one of the action plans, was to sort out the rates, have a look at the rates. Because the rates, we have really few rates bills, but we pay quite a significant amount of money in rates. And we've discovered that when the council moved out of this building to the Carnegie, basically before my time, the rates haven't been changed. So the town council have been paying the rates for this building, for all these offices. So we have to sit down and actually just go through that and sort that out, because theoretically, if I use the solicitors across the passage rate, they would qualify for small business rate, I would think, certainly the chap downstairs. So the only offices that have been properly business rated is what they call the old registry room. And I don't know, we, you know, these are all, we call a one office by former tenants' name, it's not very useful. So one of the resolutions of the state for charities to actually number them, but that's a distraction. So there's a potential, we've got, I've got the dates, I went to our letting agents, I've asked for all the dates of people moving in and out of buildings. I got that information yesterday and I now have to go have an appointment with Anglia Revenue Partnerships to basically work out, what do we do? How do we get the rates back, get all our tenants properly rated and then we can make a decision there. We've been paying £10,000 a month, probably since 2019.
A month?
Sorry, a year, sorry.
You got a little excited about Re-Christmas.
I know, it's Christmas next week, but it doesn't arrive that early. And we need to sort it out, and I would imagine that there's going to be a lot of backdating of information. But the total rates bill should come down quite significantly.
Okay, thank you very much, Terry?
That's good news, isn't it? For us, not so much for Standard Fourth Trust. So the situation is, we've got a walk-in closet here that we would keep the clothes, the regalia.
Yes, and some of the millipots, all the old millipots, yeah.
Yeah. But Standard Fourth.
But Standard Fourth Trust owe us money. I can hear you sucking on your teeth at this, but would it be an idea that we come to some sort of arrangement where that money is just paid off over a course of time for the rate? Or do we have to keep them separate?
If I can comment as well, we also owe them money because we haven't paid our sheer utility fees, because we haven't been able to determine that. So there is, there's like a an exit statement that has to be done. I mean, and the reason is, I mean, we paid, overpaid £11,000 worth of order charges. We couldn't allocate that. Our meter reading, one month we found £4,000 in debit, the next month we're £2,000 in credit. So we just haven't been able to get it. We've been trying to get the smart meters going, but also just understanding. So the nice thing about the evaluation office now, which they didn't do previously, is once you get a government gateway, it tells you every single room in this building, its square meterage, its 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 business rate. So we can now do that and better understand that. But I, they will still come and do an inspection. I'm sure they're not just going to take, oh, we're for it. So they're going to come in and do it. But but there is this statement that has to be prepared. And I don't think that that should disguise the feasibility study, because it's got nothing to do with feasibility studies. It's it's right in the box. So we owe Standing Fourth Trust some money. Every revenue partnership own Standing Fourth Trust some money and Standing Fourth Trust owes us some money for the the cost of the bill that we've been picking up.
Just to answer your point, Terry, I think one of the reasons there's such a mess between Standing Fourth and Town Council is because it's kind of quid pro quo. So I think, you know, if we are going to continue to use the store room downstairs, and I think we should, if you want to have a formal lease and have a formal payment agreement, rather than, you know, you know, go off. I I read Alan's report about the Strong Room and it occurred to me that I would assume that our insurance for the regalia is based on our us using the Strong Room. So on that basis alone, I think it makes perfect sense to continue to use it. Because we don't want to be paying a higher premium because they're in a, you know, less secure place, basically.
Why don't we need to store the robes?
It's not the robes so much. When we say regalia, it sounds like the sword and the mace.
No, no, I understand that in the Strong Room.
Yeah.
But why? We don't need anywhere to store robes and things, do we?
No, I don't suppose there's a lot of that to the robes.
We actually have space that's there's actually a room where they keep some of the some of the robes.
Cherry, somebody mentioned robes and things as well.
Yeah, there's a lot of things like the little, the inkwell and stuff that sits on the table and the loving cup and stuff like that.
They all go to safety.
Yeah, I mean, collectively, they're quite a lot of money.
Yeah.
Okay, so as I understand it, Alan, the main decision you want from us this evening is whether or not we would like to approach Standing Fourth to continue using the Strong Room. Are we content with that? It seems sensible to me.
And also what to say if you want to take from this book, you know, because if these photographs come down, are we going to take them to King, are we going to take them to the Guildhall and use one of the walls there to explain?
We've only been here in, but not that many years, and they all came from the Guildhall anyway. We've got photographs of the Guildhall. We'd load these photographs on the walls.
I don't think the mayor or photographs were that many photos, where, yeah.
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 Yeah, I don't care now, the old man photos on someone quite, you get, you know, it'd be rather nice to.
David and David Brooks and myself have had a little look around.
Yeah.
And we've, I can't say, I can't go as strong as to say we've mapped out a lot of it, but we've got some good ideas.
I think you would rather not, sorry.
I'd be quite keen for us to quantify what we've got as part of the feasibility study. I mean, I was shocked when we had the tour recently, whoever was on it, you saw it.
Oh, yeah.
And we went upstairs. I mean, there are items upstairs that should be on public display. So I think we'd be, this stuff here is on display, but actually, there's a lot more historically significant stuff that should be.
There's a huge chair downstairs that's quite important, isn't there?
Well, that should be.
We don't know about that, actually. And it needs to be away from where it is. There's a big restoration costume. Sorry for interrupting.
I'm quite used to it, David. Carry on.
And that, sorry, that chair downstairs may not be as old as we think. It could be more than from that era from the turn of the last century. But it certainly shouldn't be sitting downstairs by a power and radiator. It'd be nice to get it tonnoted up, which might be, you know, a couple of thousand quid. But it should be up and used and on display.
Maybe that's what we do with the extra.
Extra 10,000 quid that you would have designed it.
Don't even carry it.
So this is not, sorry, this beautiful stuff upstairs, this is gorgeous stuff all around this place. It's just hidden away.
So can we, as a starter, do a bit of an inventory of what we've got? Because if we're going through a process of scrapping stuff upstairs and archiving it, we need to be producing an inventory of certainly the civic items. There's some of them standing forth, but there's an awful lot of town council civic stuff upstairs. Then there's the stuff in here, and then there's the stuff now in cupboards behind us in the in the room. And then we can start to prioritise what needs to be stored and and stored appropriately in some cases. Because there's a lot of stuff which actually needs to be stored at certain temperatures and on the rest of it.
I think we'd do that sometime in the future, after we've gone in four years' time, years and whatever. There is an inventory of every new council that comes along to see what we've got. You know, let's let's make it efficient now for for future people to come and.
Yeah. And a similar sort of process for Standing Fourth, because the inventory that Standing Fourth uses, it's like tangent from finance. But Standing Fourth gets an insurance quote based on the inventory, which was produced in about 1993. And nobody's ever updated that inventory. You know, we absolutely need to be doing the same with that, because I don't think we've got half the stuff that's on that inventory anymore. So we need to, there's quite a lot of work.
I think it's very.
All in good times.
Sorry, Matt, just one thing. So because we're in a finance meeting, on, I mentioned this before. What what it costs us to to take stuff out and what it stuff costs us to put at the other end, really all will be quite obvious to us. Even if it's two columns, it says this is what it's costing, you know, so that it's clear. Because that will tie in with whatever the inventory is and all the rest of it. So if we've done that, it's going to cost us X amount.
Yeah.
And that'd help, I think.
Yeah, absolutely. And I would be keen to separate that a little bit further by identifying the costs, which actually have been a long time coming. And nothing linked to the decision to move from here. Some of these costs, particularly the archiving and the destroying, I mean, these are costs the council should have incurred before now anyway. Nothing to do with the town council moving out of King's House. There's there's a job of work here that's not been done. Do you need other decisions about King's House at this?
Okay, that was it.
So we're content with carrying on with the Strong Room. Good, thank you. Five three zero, update on the recent fire risk assessments. Again, that's in your report. I think the particular thanks to Nick, who's been churning through those fire risk assessments. And Hillary, who's been churning through them in relation to King's House for Standing Fourth Trust. Anything you wanted to add, Alan, to those?
What I've done is I've gone through and taken every single item of the fire assessment, such as the action plan. And we're actually, I think, now got the sheet recently for the one that I showed on the screen there. You know, the Guildhall's not that long, the Carnegie's based in Beijerbroek. And we're really just working through that. So there will be standard writing about these key meetings, just to really make sure it's happening. We've got, quite significant, you know, this, the, you know, the one company, we've now got three companies coming in to give us calls and check what needs to be done. So we hope we have those in the early in the year. Again, you know, some of the stuff that's come, we close down, we, we, we get them done. So when we have the locations to meet, we might just have a look at the projects budget again and say, well, if these things, we haven't spent these projects, can we spend it on the on the fire equipment? Because we need these things to be in place. We're supposed to have walking watches at the Carnegie in some of the places, you know. This is going to be done.
Okay, any questions on fire risk assessments? Is it your intention in the January finance meeting for us to see all of the list of actions and across? Okay, good, because I know we've seen the the cemetery one there as an example, but it would be good to see.
So there's a sheep, really, single fire assessment, including the standard, I know we don't cover that, but and it's there, it's all ranked.
Yeah. Thank you. Five three one, segregation of duties of finance officer as responsible finance officer.
Many of my previous lives, I've done lots of things around governance, internal controls, internal audit, et cetera. And one of the things that I'm very uncomfortable with this, when someone's in a position where you have access to assets and access to account records. I can't separate myself from the accounts and records, so I have to actually separate myself from from the assets. But what I've done is I've just, I spent a lot of time working out what to do. People have said to me, well, I should get other members of the E S T, to the acting town clerks. Like, guess what? You have you have authority over them, you know, are they listening to, you know, it's just not appropriate. So what I've done is I made a suggestion on the bank mandate that I have no signing power on any checks and on any assets. And that that be written into the the mandate. So we can still have one officer, because it's quite difficult to get two councillors together for routine mundane, you know, payments. But there'll always be a councillor that will sign that sign off. The other improvement that I'm going to do, and I've been trying to do this for many years, I've had the opportunity, is really get the ordering system right. Because at the end of the day, if your ordering system's not right, approving a payment is actually irrelevant. If someone's actually acquired goods, you've got to pay for it, you know, that they, you know. It's it's very difficult to say, well, you don't have authority to do that. So I'm really, I'm going to focus on that. But what will mean is possibly one of the councillors on this committee, you know, once a week, just signing of payments. We try and pay, we make payments once a week. We keep our payment days pretty good, I think. Further or if I do a calculation one of these days, I'm sure we pay people 20 days, you know, in terms of standard payment terms. We don't pay for fire sales unless we have a problem in charity, and we'd just like to maintain that. So if we could approach one of the councillors, do that. All their documentation is available. It's all there electronically. We paper this in the accounting function. If someone wants to see an invoice, and again, it goes back to the payments. At any point in time, if someone wants to see something, I'm happy to send it through to them. It doesn't take long for us to do that, because it sits in our core accounting records.
Okay, so there's a number of changes that you proposed within the report. First one is around a list of payments, they're one to 10, that a councillor and a senior officer can make.
Yeah.
Can I suggest that we make it clear that that councillor should be a member of the Finance and Personnel Committee rather than any councillor? I think that would make sense. I'd like to think somebody here would have most knowledge about, you know, regular transactions and be able to spot when a transaction isn't a regular transaction. So that makes sense. And then for the second part, where it says again, recommended recommended payments that must be made by councillors where it requires two councillors. I think it should be, again, a member or both should be members of the Finance and Personnel Committee. And I'd like to add that at least, well, one of them must be the chair. And just to add a additional safeguard there. I think that would strengthen it quite a bit.
Yeah. That's. It would be worth making the chair, that was the chat, just in your second thoughts as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chair or vice chair, yeah.
That's going to make Saturday so successful.
Yes, I'm on holiday.
You're done.
I only bed in COVID. Happy with both those?
Really happy.
Yeah. Can I have a proposal to accept that list of changes? Chris and the second half? David, in agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that a resolved? Was that a recommendation to council?
Because I voted chair, it's a it's a resolved.
Okay.
That's right, it's a recommendation to council. So it's a more final recommendation, so it's good, it's good, council.
Okay. So can we also taper that at the special council meeting rather than waiting till the end of January?
Okay.
Rather than waiting a month for something like quite important governance changes? Next one, five three two, update on the Guildhall scaffolding to note the action plan. It's good news for you, David. You're going to be very happy.
Absolutely.
I I think what happened is, and I have to say, the town team manager, he really worked hard getting stakeholders there. We only had confirmation at the door come at the last minute. And they broke themselves up into working groups, they went away, they did their thing, so they sat back and had a bit of a brainstorming. But the chap that 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 really coordinated and helped the town team manage coordination came up with the three objectives that you said, they understand why so that we faced this particular issue. That we had to authorize a payment today of £5,000 just to have bits of iron outside. It's it's not a very nice cost to incur. So the emphasis of that is that what they believe that they can do is, well, there's one bit of bad news and then it's good news. Bad news is that the other component apparently looks, is actually worse than the the cocktail one. So they're going to put up a platform, someone's going to come in quite soon and just do an assessment of that. Then the good news is, is that they don't believe that they need to improve it. They think that they can they can fix it in in situ. They also believe that they can take down a lot of the internal scaffolding. So even if they have to give a little bit of external scaffolding down, that will cut the cost down quite significantly. And the work to do all that is basically will start on the 9th of January, and we should have some answers. But they really do understand. We've made the point. We can't, you know, we can't wait until
Yeah.
wherever, whenever. This is really urgent. We're bleeding money. It's we've been cashed. And I think there's the understanding of that. So we have told them that there's a meeting in January that we have to have our report, which has helped set the deadline. That's the venues and markets. So that's really what they're working towards.
That's six days, isn't it? Six days, man.
It's going to be just before, just after this this one.
I just, brilliant, well done.
Yeah, well, I have to give credit to to the town team manager. You know, we've just worked together. What's happened previously, it's just been discussed, you know, that the venue's managed evolve, you've got heritage managed evolve. And just by putting it under one roof and getting one person to coordinate it, well, it's just made the biggest difference.
Yeah, I'd like, you know, the great for getting evolved, like without that push, it's not my allow. You know, it 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 would have just sat there to some design.
Yeah.
Well done, everybody.
Okay, I think the key point for me is point four, where it says a a cost to fix the towers on site to be determined. I mean, it's all very well paying for the scaffolding to tell us what the problem is. What we really want to be doing is fixing the towers. So that for me is absolutely crucial, but if it's a cost that's affordable, I'm very keen that we get on with it, frankly, using those reserves that we've discussed, rather than waiting for a funding bid that may never come. Obviously, it depends on the cost, but point four is crucial.
Yeah, and on this one, it's that if we can get those done quickly, rather than sort of sit around and think, oh, let's put a funding bid into this, that and the other. I think that we should really look at doing this out of reserve and get the thing sorted, done, dusted. You know, close the case. By the
Depends on the cost.
Obviously, it depends on the cost, but, you know. It'd take ages to get funding bids to work through that.
Could have had that 10 grand as a starting pot for the account.
We could have done, couldn't we?
No, we couldn't.
10 grand is going to run out, isn't it?
You've spent it five times. Any other questions about Guildhall scaffolding? Nope, so by the time we next meet in January.
It'll be down.
We'll have some decisions. I think the internal could be down and the second.
I think this will be very nice, it's coming down.
Yeah. Good, if you could pass on our thanks to Nick for what he's been doing on that. That's very good news. Okay, so we're required to note the action plan. Julie noted, thank you very much. We want to five three three, correspondence. Does anyone have any correspondence to note?
Is there?
Do you have any committee officers update?
No.
We do have some action points to look at. Yeah, so just rattle through, because I know we've got a couple of these that we can take off now. Town council website is being developed and policies are to be added to the website once the update has been completed. At some point in December, and we're rattling through days now, councillors are supposed to be sent a link to access the website before it goes live, so they can merrily look at it over Christmas and New Year.
I spoke to David about that. Is that happening?
Every time I feedback, it does happen.
Okay, I do have the link, so I can do it. It's out amongst notes, literally.
Okay, originally, we were hoping that would be done the second week of December, I think. So I'm quite keen that we do that quite soon.
Okay, we, so with the active town clerk's permission, I'll do that right away. Is that, is that okay?
Can you take that away and just double check with David and then?
Is David still in? This is, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
He's sick. So I spoke to him when Monday week ago, he said, give me a week.
Yeah.
I'm going with him, so it's about.
An idea is that councillors can spend between now and January checking it, proofreading it, clicking buttons, make sure they're not deadling. An idea is that councillors can spend between now and January checking it, proofreading it, clicking buttons, make sure they're not dead links and that sort of thing, before it goes live at the end of January. There's bound to be some gremlins in this system. We, we need to find them before the public do. Okay. Risk management, is there anything you want to say about the Charles Borough and the financial risk assessment stuff at this point?
I just.
To leave that one.
This part of that.
Don't worry. Aha, there is an update, that's good. An update on the waste management disposal cost, resistance supply given notice, new contract starts the first of December, so we can take that one off. Finance officer to investigate the rates for the council chamber as these seem high.
It's resolving itself, I think, because.
Yeah. I think it would be good if we could leave that on there for now, because you're looking into this sort of backdated issue. And at some point, we'll have a figure for who owes who what and all the rest of it. Local procurement policy will leave there for now. The roles and responsibilities document to be updated at a future meeting. I'm going to taper that at the January meeting and.
Yeah, I'd be embarrassed because I looked for this document and we've obviously worked in different parts of the S and T, the complete document I couldn't find, so.
Yep. Meter readings we don't need to do now, an analysis requested on bank charges. And that was included in last month, wasn't it? Committee requested that councillor Blackburn be invited to, yeah. There was a request that returning the reference of all the committees to set the allotments. All committees are now approved, yeah, for councils, we approve that and delete it. There was a request that planning training, training be done in person, but that's still outstanding. I know there's been some contact with.
I had some planning training, albeit. By Teams or Zoom or whatever it was. It was decent.
Okay, that's good.
I still think there is a need for more training and more face-to-face training. You, you're, you're big on that one, aren't you?
Oh, yeah, thanks, thanks, yeah. Especially off the territory.
Yeah.
Not least, there's the machine I used for this trading was the Breckland machine that I've been given, and it's not up to the task, really.
Yeah. Okay, that one on there. Rationalise the committee, that's been done. Committee officer to send the handbook to everyone, that's been done. We've removed quite a few there, which is good. Community engagement to discuss and agree any consultation or media release, anyone to be shouting about anything from this meeting?
It is. Do a media release on the pins, can we?
Did Breckland do their own one, though?
They did, and I, I was quoted, I think we could do our one as well.
Okay. If we know that, but can we leave you as the bin man to liaise with Hazel about words?
I'll send her some suggestive words.
Great, if you could, and, and a picture.
On, on that, the. I've been sent a email today, you were included in them. One about Lady Gentlemere, where the town council had five thousand pounds coming in. And then one was about the lights in the Charles Borough museum. Guy, well, if you haven't seen it, I'll forward it to you, because that is, maybe you won't, and I'll forward it on. Okay. Because it is a case of, and we've had funding last year or the twenty twenty-one in some case, for a project of Lady Gentlemere and Borough. What's happened, could they have an update and some photographs?
They contacted you.
Why not?
Well, you weren't the applicant.
Special pay you.
Well, come on, just look at me. Yeah.
You could send that to myself and Alan, Gary and anyone else that wants it, that'd be useful. I know all about that, I helped write the funding.
Right, well, you know, nothing's happened in those places, so I'll send it, you can respond.
Okay, no worries.
To me and then I'll just. No, anyway.
Okay. That came out of community engagement, thank you. Right, five three seven two three, to consider resolving that pursuant to the public body's admission to meetings at nineteen sixty. Press and public be excluded for any remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of the confidential nature of the business to be discussed. We have a personnel item remaining, which is obviously below the line. Are you content, members, that we exclude press and public? Or at the very least, turn off the recording in this case, because there's nobody here, happy? Thank you.